One seven. This is good.
All right, say the number again, four oh seven?
Four oh seven, four eight four, nine seven seven.
Four.
Nine seven seven.
I'm so long.
Look, we still have comments to stay safe.
Hopefully my arms.
Yeah.
Hi. Oh, my God. Is that what happens when you graduate? I mean, graduate.
Graduate, yeah.
Nothing we're just making up for these. Because we're in negotiations.
Chris.
You on? Okay.
Yeah. My chair. Is that good? You like that?
No.
Ooh. All right, hold on.
All right. Yep.
Good?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Don't forget we get our early tonight. Get our early tonight. Call that. Call that.
Yeah.
Good, how are you? I didn't have a cheat.
I recommend that we take this. Make sure you take care of yourself.
No, I do.
Sure, no, sir. He's important, good. He really is important. It's not good. I wanted to.
He said he smelled that. Thank you, I thought it was worse.
Not polo. Okay.
It's not all polo.
Stolen. Should read it.
Hey, how you guys doing? I didn't forget, don't worry. Been so busy.
Hey, did you take it off already?
No.
Just leaving on, just in case.
Right, just in case we'll scratch it if we need to.
Nobody can see my desktop if I walk in.
Okay.
It'll probably hear and get it.
Okay.
Good, how are you?
I'm late, please, for tonight.
Okay, good.
Okay, retirement. Retirement face going on. Long hair, that's what, um, blonde head.
Here's Tracy sitting there, and I don't have enough room over there, legroom.
You're busy becoming graphic.
Now, I should thirty eight more seconds.
No.
Yeah.
Twenty minutes. Oh, come on. Did you see? Really? All right, hold on. Eight, eight thirty. Eight thirty. Ronnie, play closest to the bins.
We can't do eight thirty. Sorry, we did eight thirty.
Gotta go higher lower.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year, everyone.
You too.
I'm Pastor Joe Starling, I'm Senior Pastor of Trinity Free World Church here in Sanford, right on Sanford Avenue, the corner of Sanford Avenue and Sixth Street. I was actually born on Sixth Street. I didn't even realize that until we moved in and walking out one afternoon, and I was like, wow, you know, I was born four blocks down from the church that we pastor. I am honored to be here tonight, and let's get down to business here. Let us pray. Father, let us all realize that all power comes from you. So with that being said, we lift up this body of leaders tonight, Lord God. We ask, Father, in the name of Jesus, that you will cause them to operate in a spirit of servitude, that you would have them operate in the spirit of stewardship, and that you would provide them strategies to move this city forward. And I lift up everyone that's a part of this body of leadership. I lift their families up to you, Father, because as they serve us, I pray tonight that you would take care of their homes, their children, their businesses, that you would watch over everything that concerns them as they serve this city. In the powerful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the United States of America. We are a rightful nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate that. Commissioner Britton will not be with us this evening, she had a main event at the Florida Department of Justice. She is to attend, who would keep them in their prayers. First order of business is the minutes of December twelve work session in regular meeting.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Do you have others? Next we have consent A through I, is anyone from the audience supposed to speak to any item on the consent agenda? Democrat commission for motion for the employment.
Move to approve. Second.
That also did A.
Oh, okay. They were out.
Okay, so we do have two add-ons to approve the lieutenant's contract and the fire department lieutenant's contract. So, do we have a motion for A through?
Move to approve A through K. Second.
Question second, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Pass your answer. This is public hearings, first we have the number forty seven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance to the city of Sanford, Florida, amending the City of Sanford competency plan as previously amended, providing for amendment of the future land use map, the future land use element of the City of Sanford competency plan relative to certain real property approximately one point four five acres in size. Tax parcel identification number thirty three dash nineteen dash thirty one dash three hundred dash thirteen fifty dash zero 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 zero. Addressed as forty forty East State Road forty six, and described in this ordinance from the Seminole County CLM Commercial Future Land Use Designation to the City GC General Commercial Future Land Use Designation. Provided for legislative finding and intent, provided for assignment of land use designation to the property, provided for servability, provided for ratification of prior access to the city, provided for complex, provided for complication directions to the code of fire, and provided for effective date. That's the order by law, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, on December the first of twenty twenty-two, the City's Planning and Zoning Commission, concurring with the City's Planning Act, voted to recommend that the City Commission adopt an ordinance to amend the future land use from commercial of Seminole County to general commercial for the City of Sanford on one point four five acres as the project address of forty four East State Road forty six, as the staff recommendation City Commission approved, this ordinance.
In this public hearing, does anyone in front of the audience supposed to speak to this item? Anybody in the public hearing, bring a commission for action?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. That brings us to ordinance forty seven twenty-two, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance to the City of Sanford, Florida, providing for the rezoning of a parcel one point four five acres in size, subject property being located at forty forty East State Road forty six within the city limits. Maps relating to the property are attached, tax parcel identification number thirty three dash nineteen dash thirty one dash three hundred dash thirteen fifty dash zero 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 from Seminole County, A one agricultural zoning district classification to the City GC two general commercial zoning district classification, provided for taking and implementing administrative actions, provided for the adoption of a map by reference, repealing all conflicting ordinances, provided for servability, provided for non-complication, and provided for an effective date, that's the order by law, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, and the companions to the prior legislation, on December the first of twenty twenty-two, the City's Planning and Zoning Commission, concurring with the City's Planning Act, voted to recommend that the City Commission adopt the ordinance to rezonate one point four five acres from agriculture to general commercial as a project address of forty forty East State Road forty six, and therefore as a staff recommendation, City Commission approved, ordinance number forty seven twenty-two.
This is a judicial matter and asset requires discussion of odds, partake communications investigation site present. And next, for the opinions, any very mismatter, if anyone has anything to report?
Nope.
This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience supposed to speak to this item? Seeing anyone in the public hearing, bring a commission for action?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. Resolution thirty ninety-nine, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, as the city staff's recommendation, City Commission approved Resolution number thirty ninety-nine, amending the budget amount of twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and approving the procurement of services from Neil Shaper in association with Ed Water Resources for the Sanford Marina for the damages from Hurricane The Air.
Anyone wants to speak to this item? Do we have questions or motions from the commission? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass your answer. Resolution thirty-one hundred, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, it is the city staff's recommendation, City Commission approved Resolution thirty-one hundred to amend the budget and authorize procurement of needed services from Simpson Environmental Services for the Sanford Marina in an amount not to exceed forty-four, forty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and eleven cents.
Anyone from the audience supposed to speak? Motion or questions from the commission?
Sorry, Craig. I know, um... I know we, uh, I've been told we can't file a claim with FEMA for the damages to uh, seawall and inlets. What applies on these issues?
We're gonna submit for everything, open that damage assessment that was just passed and the next item too.
Okay.
It all, they all, uh, the whole Marina suffered, uh, interior flooding, so...
Well, I got bad news about the other day, which I wanted good news. Thank you.
I had a pre-conversation with them before, and it's the FEMA, our consultant, is leading us through doing these steps. Yeah, yeah, our FEMA consultants kind of guided us through this. Okay, thank you.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. Resolution thirty-one oh one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, city staff is recommending, City Commission approved Resolution number thirty-one oh one to amend the budget, authorize procurement, activate the services from extreme roofing construction in an amount not to exceed one hundred and nineteen thousand thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents in restitution to the repair work needed at the Sanford Downtown Marina.
Anyone wants to speak to this? You have questions or a motion from the commission?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. Resolution thirty-one oh two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, this is a recommendation from Sanford, City Commission approved. Determination of the conflict with Southern Sunshine Group, approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-one oh two, and amend the budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand and twenty-three dollars and approve and authorize expenditure for Brightview Landscape Services in an amount not to exceed four thousand, I mean, four hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
Anyone wants to speak to this? I don't have any commission for questioning.
I wanted to ask a question, I'm sorry. I know we're, I know we've been unhappy with the performance of the previous room. That's why we're replacing them. Is this an additional hundred and twenty-three thousand? On top of what was already budgeted, or is this?
It's, it's above what was already budgeted.
So we're really gonna expect some high standards at this cost? We're agreeing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If you, um, look at the the bid tally, it reached from a low of two ninety-five to a high of forty. No, I saw that. Sometimes low bids not the best.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think a second.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. Resolution thirty-one oh three, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, city staff recommends approval of Resolution thirty-one oh three to amend the budget amount of ten thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars from the Community Development Agency for pilot program continuation for the Goldsboro area.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, Tom Harmon, I've been on the development director. Um, I just wanted to spend this opportunity to share ridership numbers with you, that was a request made at a prior City Commission meeting, so I'm gonna purse the dais and just hand out some ridership numbers. All right, sorry about that, slow speed there. Basically, you have two handouts, one, if you see on the first page, it's basically tabular breakout of what the pilot program is looking like. The pilot program has occurred from, um, for the last quarter of twenty twenty-two, October, November, December. Um, the budget amendment that we're looking at tonight is for a month extension of that. And the, probably the most interesting way to look at this is to look at the second page, there's a column chart that shows all the stops by color, so you can kind of see where the most active stops are within, within the, um, within the program. Um, I just wanted to spend this time, since we're asking for this budget amendment, to share this ridership numbers. That's something that I think the City Commission asked for, and so we have it. Any questions?
This meets number two in our goals, and we discussed in the workshop.
Yeah.
Kind of like two.
And the City Mayor members of the commission, the audience that have not had a chance to see this, basically, this is a pilot project that the city have with a pilot for a trolley that goes and connects the Goldsboro area to the downtown. And it shows that when it started out, it had a ridership of forty-four for a week, and it led us to last ridership in the center was over four hundred, so that showed an increase in the ridership.
Yeah, the trend line is certainly what you wanted to see, an increased ridership.
Yeah, and I'd like to note that we added Georgetown Square the last couple of weeks, and you see had a significant number of riders, so I appreciate them. I think within twenty-four hours, added that stop.
That's correct, and I think that was your suggestion. That's all I had.
Okay, and just to point out, this is paid by the CRA.
This is entirely a CRA, you might recall that as part of our budget cycle, we asked that budgeted events for the CRA go to this board. Previously, that was not the case.
And then, to follow up, there is a grant proposal being prepared.
That's correct, that's right, glad to mention that. We are applying for an FDOT intermodal grant that is due January twentieth, we have an application process in play. We should get word back by March. Uh, the CRA might come back and try to fund this until March, through the budget roll of the process with Cindy, um, just so there would be, uh, once we get feedback on whether or not we're gonna give the award of this grant, which we'll know in March. Um, so it's, we're truly doing everything in our power to try to not disrupt the continuity of it. Um, if we don't get this grant, there's another one that's lined up to open up the new fiscal year of the state, which is July one, and that is a service development grant. We're confident we're probably gonna get one of those, but we just don't know. At this point, I don't, I can't estimate probabilities of this, but that's, um, that's the deal with it.
Okay, and just to make sure everybody understands, this, we we are planning to keep this running through March, which is when we will find out whether we get the grant or not.
That's correct, and the CRA is prepared to actually fund it from March to June.
If we get the grant.
If we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, March would be the end of this. But we have another grant lined up that we would apply for in the fall.
So, we're just trying to make sure it doesn't stop and try to start it back, but there's, there's no guarantee that this is going to continue without either grant funding or additional funding.
That's correct, as a matter of fact, within the grant application, we're asking for a little bit of capital improvement for stops, a little bit of wayfinding, but, but it's primarily an operations, uh, operations grant, and we're asking for a one hundred percent funding from FDOT for this pilot program. We are asking only for fifty percent funding for the primary trolley system, which is that much larger number, so that's the handout.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have? Motion? So we get a motion or further questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. Resolution thirty-one oh four, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission, city staff is looking to implement a new program called Central Square to replace the Citizen Serve Program, and this program would bring conformity and uniformity to all the departments and increase efficiency in processing permitting, enhance our ability to process and include the ability to give timely refunds, and therefore requesting a transfer of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the building fund to allow for this acquisition.
And will this will this give us a better customer experience, getting permits?
Yes, that is the plan, that's the purpose of it.
Anyone from the audience supposed to speak? Motion or a motion or questions?
Move to approve. Second.
Second, further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass your answer. Okay, that brings us to City Attorney Department.
Real quickly, this, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Mr. Colbert regrets not being here, he's still, he's got a... He's been ill, he's got a hospital Saturday and, uh, and he's a little bit weak and, uh, he looks forward to coming back. And, and the second thing is, as the father of a retired law enforcement officer's daughter and her, and her husband, today is International Law Enforcement Day, Appreciation Day, and I want to say thank you to Chief Smith and his women and men because I, I know that they just really do a great job. I've seen what y'all have seen. The last thing, there was a, a news bulletin from the Orlando Sentinel I got just a little while ago. And the key point here is y'all do a great job keeping the city out of litigation. We're laying these cases, uh, it's expensive. Uh, Mr. Dorwell, this deceiving, the federal judge awarded the county four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in attorney's fees, which is ninety-two thousand dollars less than the county asked for. But the point is, the county spent a half a million dollars in defending that manu action.
Wow.
Thank you. Say Clark?
I just want to remind you, the next workshop will be redistricting and Mayor, you have your upcoming appointments.
I was wondering if you were gonna take that to me?
Yes.
The next workshop?
Work session.
Work session.
Will be what did you say?
Redistricting.
Yes, redistricting. And Mayor has.
So when, when was the next TNC?
February of March. Did you get the answer on that?
No, I didn't hear that.
The answer I got was they, they, um, strongly recommend against reappointing and have somebody do it for a year and then head you to that. I'm hurt, that's the one I got. So I don't have to go to a meeting for a year? Gosh.
It is in.
It's obviously unprecedented.
Maybe there'll be something else.
Yeah, I was gonna get counted. I'm, I, I've been told that's a really not fun meeting.
You know what, I did it for like eight years, you get to suffer too.
Nope.
We'll find something for her. Um, what's the one that's way south, Linda? All right, but their meeting's not until after, TNC's not until after our next meeting, so I can't say that's not here. Okay.
Can I ask you a serious question, since you are having these appointments? And this may not be the time, but can you really divide me in time? Because I feel like maybe it's time is coming. Does this, this require a specific?
No, but I mean, I get, usually get something out of it.
You do?
When I get nothing else, getting to see, um, commissioners and talk about future sports.
That's true.
That did fill in the airport.
That's right.
Yes.
Well, that number nine.
So, um, I don't think it's worse than some of the other ones that it took.
Yeah.
All right, City Managers report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Commission, we have a number of public works and utilities staff attending tonight. I have to have Mr. Villa at the car kind of talk about them.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. I was not prepared to talk about that, so I don't have anything prepared, but I just wanted to mention that, uh, I'm glad some of our guys are here that you don't usually see.
Can they all stand up so we can see each one's face?
Well, they are public works, utilities, and if it's okay with these are jokes, there are some parks and ground employees do, they can stand up also. Uh, just wanted to mention that they have been working nonstop. Now, I just can't tell you how proud I am of them and how hard they have worked since the hurricanes and they have not stopped working. So just really wanted to make sure they are recognized and just wanted to say thank you to them. And I appreciate, uh, City Manager, you asking me to recognize them, even though.
Well, I appreciate the fact of them taking their time to come and to be visible because we don't get to see them. I think it's important for the Mayor and commissioners to get to see the staff and do all the hard work, so thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, Cedric put a couple of their cell numbers in his, um, out of office reply, which, um, gave me immediately, immediate contact with, uh, some people to get some work done. So I appreciate, I know how hard they are working and how quickly they're resuming.
We are trying to do our best, like I said, we are sort of problem with the whole infrastructure, unfortunately, so it does not seem, uh, it just seems like there are a lot of issues, but we are working very hard and hopefully, very soon, we can take care of a lot of the problem, ongoing issues that we are, we are having. We are working on that and hopefully in a year I can be here and have a lot of issues.
In six months, you're gonna tell us that part of the problem is solved.
I am more, hopefully sooner than that.
Right, Cedric?
Yes, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, and that brings us to citizens' participation. I do have four requests to speak, um, one to oppose.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a retired teacher, forty years' experience, thirty-six of which are in Seminole County. And it took me all forty years to finally make it to seventy thousand dollars. I retired in two thousand nine. I realize how difficult it is for the firefighters and the policemen to go ahead and make a decent wage with their families and everything because I worked two jobs part of the time. That was hard. So please consider them and their families when you make your budget and everything. I know they'd appreciate it and I appreciate their having my back. Thank you.
Thank you. When did you say you retired from teaching?
Two thousand nine. I was at Goldsboro, Wicklow, and Croons.
Well, I can tell you the, the top pay rate is not much more now than it was then. Um, Sharon Davis.
Good afternoon. Um, I come here as a citizen, born and raised in this town fifty-five years ago. Um, I've seen this city grow to an amazing place and I still am proud to live and work and play in this city. Um, I also support our Sanford Police and Fire Department. I know two of my friends that work in retail. Uh, they make more than these ladies and gentlemen who put their lives on the line every day. We can't expect them to run into a fire or look at the barrel of a gun and, and, and make what a retail. And I worked in retail eighteen years, so I'm not saying anything bad about retail. I'm just saying these ladies and gentlemen don't deserve to put their lives on the line and make the same or less salary than they do. We want them here to support our city and our community. They're everywhere and they deserve to make what they should make. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel McCovey.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here tonight because of my extreme disgust I have for this administration this evening. I'm referring to your lack of urgency that you have shown in getting the police contract finalized. For nine months now, the two sides have gone back and forth with the city setting a hellbend on shortchanging and nickel and diming the police department, not treating those same as other employees. There are a few things that have been brought up the past few weeks that have bothered me. One of those, we've seen that four city managers and super, or supervisors got more than fifty-five thousand dollars in raises last year. Excuse me. How is it the city can find a way to give management raises averaging thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars per year and can't seem to take care of our first responders? Not to mention, one of those managers was the chief of police. He gets his raise, but the officers have to fight for nine months to get theirs. This department currently has twenty-seven vacancies with more likely to come very soon. Sorry, lost my focus. We have lost officers that are experienced, hold multiple certifications, have made connections within our community and in some cases friendships. Our officers know this city inside and out. They can get to anywhere in this city quickly because they know this city. I found out last week that we had to pull our traffic officers in to do patrol because of shortages. How's that make everybody here feel? This is our safety you're messing with. The more officers that you guys let get away from this city puts us, it makes us less safe. I listened to you guys this evening. In this agenda, you had five budget amendments that you somehow found to find over six hundred thousand dollars to put in different places. But you can't find a way to make it right for the police and fire departments. I have a challenge for each and every one of you this evening. Look around the room tonight. Look at the officers and firefighters that are here tonight. Look them in the eyes, tell them how much you appreciate them. Then tell them you'll do whatever it takes to make it right. Stop wasting money on golf courses, roundabouts, and leases on police cars that very soon you may not have officers to drive. Stop making excuses and more importantly, stop stalling and get this done now. Thank you.
Thank you. May I come off?
Hello, good evening. So we're gonna talk about the same thing that you've just heard now, once, twice, but three times. Um, addressing, or actually, I'd like to express concern with the numerous first responders leaving Sanford due to subpar wages. As it was just expressed, I believe there's twenty-seven open positions with the police department. I know that the fire department has just filled their positions, but they were trying to open a new station and you have, they have not been able to hire people for that. So I'm wondering if the city has done a pay equity analysis to determine if our first responders are making money as other local agencies are. And if you have not done a pay analysis, why have you not? We are not able to retain officers and fire depart, and fire, um, department, and we are not able to hire the people. So, and if you have done a pay analysis, where is this information so it can be determined? Are our first responders getting paid what they should be? Um, and then the other thing is, when is enough enough? Do you have a limit to how low this staffing will be with the fire department or with the police department to keep us safe? Not just to keep your citizens safe, but keep your businesses safe and to keep your visitors safe? Because right now, it doesn't seem to be that. In my personal experience with my coworkers, Sanford already has a reputation as a place that is unsafe. So if we do not have enough first responders, police department, EMS, fire department, when will enough be enough? Um, we must keep citizens, businesses, and visitors safe to grow and to keep people here. So I'm just wondering, have you checked to see if they're getting paid enough? And what is the limit? How low will you go? Is it fifty percent? Is it ten percent? Is it ninety percent? Because right now, some evenings, we have six officers. That is not safe. That is not safe for our citizens, that's not safe for our businesses, and that is not safe for visitors to come into Sanford and to guard this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience who wants to speak? And I will close the citizens' participation part. Okay.
My name is Randy Jackson. I'm a crew leader with the Utilities Department. Um, for one, I didn't come here for, uh, thank you. You guys do that all the time. Uh, I, I like to be fairly compensated for what we do. You guys don't always see what we do, but we're out there two, three in the morning chasing down sewer systems that's putting these businesses pretty much out of commission for you. I'm away from my thing, I have an eight-month-old daughter where I get called three, four in the morning and I can't even revolve. I gotta wake my wife up, she gotta work in the morning, but hey, now she's gotta take care of the baby while I come out and do the things to keep this city up and running and all we do is a thank you. When it's time for raises, it's always, you know, a bunch of red tape and a bunch of, well, lack of terms, BS that comes with it. So all I want to say is, thank yous go a long way, but that's all we get, get is thank yous. You're like me compensated. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience who wants to speak?
I would. I like this a lot of players, right? I want to be totally clear with utilities as well. Randy is my, my buddy. Um, but kind of to piggyback on what he said, we want to have somebody to speak for us, just like these nice people spoke up for the police department and the fire department. We feel undervalued and we do feel unappreciated. We hear thank you, we hear all that stuff, but it don't mean nothing because mostly y'all don't know who we are. If it wasn't for the services that we provide, fixing, installing, the maintenance of the water and sewer system, how many of these businesses would be able to work, including City Hall? It's not fair that we're not respected just as much. And I'm not saying what the fire and police officers do is less or is, is minor, but we should be respected and sometimes should be looked at as first responders as well. When fire highways get knocked off domains, fire department, they're calling us. When city, the, when businesses and stuff don't have water and sewer, who they calling? They're calling us. But we're not respected as, you know, we don't get the same respect that other departments do. And it's not fair to us because we come out and we work just as hard as everybody else. Sometimes you see us working more than you see other people working. And it's not just utilities, but the other work, someone working, guys, everybody, we, we all away from our families. These last two stories, we've been away from our families, been putting in overtime, overtime, all that kind of stuff. We're tired. We are beyond tired, said, said earlier in the meeting, that we're tired. And what's gonna start happening is you guys are gonna start seeing a lot of employees hurt or killed because we're understaffed. We need workers bad. And the first response we get is, we're not paid enough. Nobody wants to come work for Sanford because they don't pay enough. Yeah, raise a fifteen-dollar minimum wage, but it's not competitive for other cities. I could go work at Wawa and make more money than I can doing all the stuff we do. And it would be nice if some of you guys who sit in some of these seats, well, that should take the ten, the, the time to get to know some of us personally. Maybe you have a little more compassionate understanding of the way we feel. You understand our exhaustion. I don't work nearly as many hours as some of my coworkers have been working. And I know they're tired, but every day we come here with, with the same smile on our face, trying to get the same work done with less amount of people. Something has to give because like the one lady said about the police department, you guys are gonna start losing all kind of city workers. Yeah. And if some of us aren't job scared, to be honest with you. So something has to give. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak?
For those who have seen how about six eighteen is striking to me. Um, you said you wanted people to speak for you, and I'd love to speak on that because if I did not have that department and their responsiveness, I would not still have a building and my hundred and sixty employees would not be working. So that recognition that they need is not just thank yous, it is financial pay. We sit in the alleyway covered in water, sucking out, you know, hot pipes and getting things done. They, they need that support. And I will say that I'm very disappointed that we didn't get to all the agenda items at work session today because I feel like.
to all the agenda items at work session today, because I feel like all of this goes back to leadership, and that evaluation starts with the city manager, and I'd love to see that conversation reflect how everyone is feeling. It's incredibly uncomfortable for city staff to have to come up here and tell you these things. It should become a leadership, and I hope you guys reflect that in your community.
There we are. Come on down to the podium, please.
How y'all doing? I know my guy expected me to speak today, but kind of felt on my heart to say something. I was just asking Sidney, we was talking, I said, man, we should be reclassified as first responders, because at the end of the day, each and every one of you that's sitting up there, I don't know if you guys live in Sanford, but if you have a sewer problem and it's backing up into your house, y'all call somebody. Y'all call the city of Sanford, well, y'all call us to come out and fix the problem. Man, you ever, it was hour, 2:00 in the morning. Carrie, you know me. You know I'm from here. I do pretty good for myself. I'm a resident of the city, but, you know, for other ventures that I have. But you ever been out 2:00 in the morning coming home, and you see those guys working at 3:00 in the morning with flashlight and annoys? And I stopped, stopped that speaker and said, man, y'all good? Yeah, we trying to get the main straight. I mean, sewer bubbling up, these guys working and stuff, but that don't go, that don't... I guess the city feel like they give you a check, they paying you for something, but at the end of the day, we got families to take care of, and it just, like you said, the compensation ain't there. I know you guys may just, you know, one ear going one ear and out the other ear, but truth, you guys, y'all have to do something about it. I mean, everybody always say, police department, the police department, fire department, yes, I respect them, I respect everything they do, but my guys do a whole lot as well. So, as I was saying, the police department and the fire department, say all city employees, because all are same one road. So, attitude reflects leadership. So, it starts up there and come down here.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Lieutenant, City Assemblyman, Fire Department, 23 years. I'm also a city citizen and Seminole County resident for 30 years. I have a whole agenda I could go into, but I'm not going to, because our citizens spoke up about PD, that we, our heroes in PD, we have a public works desk, because there are the guys we call when we need that, we shut the media and solve, so thank you. My second point I want to make is, we didn't get here overnight. This is a reflection of 10 to 12 years of lack of people hearing us. Every year, we've asked for 1% or 2% here and there, has been denied by posturing from upper management at City Hall, not lawyers, but upper management at City Hall. We didn't get 30% behind in two to three years. It's been 10 to 12 years. We're here now because we're at an end. Something's got to be done. For PD's in a much dire situation than we are, I have to go off them, the city citizen. I've made multiple phone calls to these guys, hey, there's people speeding up and down 15th Street, 16th Street right in front of my house. They don't have the guys in common do is traffic monitoring. Right now, they don't have it. They're operating the whole city on half staff, which is ridiculous, especially when we have anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000 people downtown on a weekly basis that require our protection, and they're operating at half staff. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name's Chantel Williams, speaking out for the fire department, who of course, very under the pay, they pay, and also police officers. I know I'm feeding them on the 16th for Martin Luther King Day for free, because I know some of them only make about $12 an hour. And to speak about our city works department, I know my business was shut down about 12 days combined because of sewage, and I had to rely on them to come, even down to sprinkling some white stuff. I don't know what it is, but I know it kept me in business the next day. So, certainly, if you have a blade you need to approve, please let it happen.
Anyone else who can speak? And I will close citizens' participation and go to the Commission. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Henry? Now, the CRA, I'll leave it over me. I want to make the group up. Yeah. Did you hear what I said about, you know, since she retired in 2009, how it's changed? Not to make light of it, you know, I think everyone out here understands the issues this city faces in terms of our finances, and we are, all of us, the staff, the management, the commission, looking to do the best we possibly can, but there is a certain amount of money that's available, and we will continue to work with both unions, and are looking forward to hearing back from them what their next proposal is, that we're adjourned.